I'd like to call to order the parent and community outreach subcommittee meeting of Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. So can you please call the rule?
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Harp?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here. Please scan for salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation under God, with simple liberty and justice for all.
Per sum it to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions that are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, are viewed in knowledge and permits. Do we have any citizens input?
No, we didn't.
Okay, so we can jump right into our agenda. The first item on the agenda is discussion around identifying the purpose of the parent engagement subcommittee and determine the shared mission. So I think it might be helpful if we just started with what we see as a goal for this particular committee. I know that we have a review of the current practices and needs, so maybe it makes sense to kind of go over some of that first, and then we can develop our shared mission. So who's got their... I know that we have a presentation here.
I mean, I think that we can turn it over to Dr. Taylor. She can open it up.
Okay.
Open the meeting up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So what we've planned in terms of a presentation, you'll hear about what we're doing more broadly from the central office in terms of parent and community engagement. You'll also have an opportunity to hear what's happening in the special ed lens and also with our English learners. So I'm going to turn it over to Cindy to talk about what we currently have.
And Dr. Taylor, I didn't see you on the computer there, so I didn't address you because I didn't notice that you were sitting there, so sorry about that.
Oh, it's fine, all right. Don't worry, it's all right.
Good.
Hi, thank you for having me. So excited to revive this committee. Such an important aspect of student success. So just wanted to talk a little bit about, well, first of all, parent engagement is so key to student success, so, you know, we're always looking at what our current practices are and how we can do it better. We can always improve in all our, you know, practices and strategies. So some of the current strategies that we use for communication, kind of just listed them with an overview of what we do throughout the district. Some schools do things a little bit different, so I just sort of listed all that we do, or maybe not all, but most of what we do. Open houses, family nights, parent-teacher conferences, routines through letters, newsletters, weekly school robo calls providing information on current events, personal phone calls to families, positive behavior and accomplishment postcards sent home to families. Communication through multiple methods include phone calls, emails, information packets, drop-in hours, school website, social media, and so forth. Communication in families' home language is always a priority for us, so anytime that, you know, we send out letters, we are thoughtful in translating those in the home language anytime possible. Same with the robo calls. Parent cafes, and we've been doing those for years. Parent workshops, and then community resource events. Try to participate in any community event that will allow us to have tables. Oftentimes, we have each school represented there and also like a district table, so really trying to get parents to partner with us in their child's education. Just talking a little bit about how the importance of working collaboratively with parents to really help partner so that they can help their students at home, their children at home. And some of those ways that we do that are with learning-based activities like our literacy nights and math nights, the parent workshops that will provide parenting skills such as supporting your child through COVID with different stressors, anxiety. Parent cafes, which we really try to get some feedback from parents of what the needs are and bring in different presenters to support those needs, to address those needs and build a skill level in our parents. Like I said, the community events, and then whenever we have these events, we really try to bring in some of our community partners to really educate parents around what the resources are in the communities. For example, when we've had our open houses, we often invite community partners in to set up tables and really talk to parents around what they can provide and how to access those services. Providing support and resources to students and families during breaks such as, you know, reading activities for summer, math packets, all that, just keep their skills shopped throughout the summer to really avoid learning gaps. You know, and then parent-teacher conferences, as much as possible, we try to keep them in person, however, you know, obviously due to COVID, there's been, you know, we're open to virtual or phone. Any way that a parent can partner with us, we're open to those possibilities, even for, you know, different new school meetings. We really, you know, one silver lining with COVID has been, you know, the virtual meetings, and that's really helped to engage some parents. So we're, although with love in person, we're absolutely open to the virtual piece, and sometimes that needs to happen due to safety concerns due to COVID.
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Of course.
So just in the interest of, I'm just trying to stick to what our items are on the agenda.
Yeah.
Would you say that the purpose of the parent engagement center is exactly what's listed here, that we're looking to empower families to partner with schools and be active participants in their children's education?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if we're thinking about a shared mission, do you think that that fits into the shared mission and alignment of how this subcommittee can be helpful to that mission?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, I think that sometimes when we're doing the work, we, you know, we get stuck in what we think we can do better, but getting like a fresh vision to sort of give us feedback will absolutely enrich anything that we do, and we, it's so valuable.
Because I come from this wraparound collaborative approach, right?
Absolutely.
So I'm looking at, you know, this subcommittee is responsible for supporting the work that you're doing and giving input, but absolutely supporting the work you're doing. So if we're looking at a shared vision, just to look at that first agenda item, then I think, can we agree that what we're looking at is our mission is to support you in empowering families to partner with schools and be active participants?
Absolutely.
Okay, do we have any other questions on that particular agenda item?
No, I don't.
Okay, so where I'm going with this, so now we jump into, great, what are our needs? What are we currently doing?
And that's where you were.
Yeah, yeah. So just building upon what we were talking about, some other ways that we create that family connectedness is through, you know, clear assignments, banners, bulletin boards, you know, when families come in, so sort of this information place that they can just, you know, when they walk into the building, kind of see what's happening in the school and just get, you know, some overall information of what's happening and how they can access supports, different events that's going on. We really encourage our schools, when they have families coming in, to greet them at the door and just really make those personal connections that are so critical in really engaging our families, ensuring that we have active PTOs where they work collaboratively with the school to, you know, to support student learning and enrichment. Hosting parent forums and discussion groups, how important is that, just really hearing from our parents of what their needs are, how we can improve upon our engagement activities, but just really working collaboratively to support their child? That can look so different in, you know, so many households. So just really being thoughtful about getting that feedback from parents directly. And then principal coffee hours that, you know, pre-COVID were, I think, you know, some of my favorite things that I've ever participated in, where it's really that, you know, one-on-one sometimes, you know, conversation where you're really having those deep thoughtful discussions with families and really connecting in such a deeper level to support their students and what the needs are, and really getting their feedback of how we can not only grow, but improve, you know, our current practice. Community collaboration, we have the most amazing community partners that, you know, anytime we bring a need to our community partners, they really go above and beyond to support us, not only to support us, but just to really enrich our staff, our students, and fill those needs in such a miraculous way sometimes, whether that be feeding our families, to supporting them for the holidays, to, you know, personal hygiene products. These are all ways that, you know, we're supported, you know, just adding, if we come to our community partners with maybe some counseling needs or group needs, they create those resources for us and really tailor them to the needs of our families and students coming into our schools anytime the school has a specific need. So that's very critical in supporting our students' success. Some barriers, should we talk about those?
Yeah.
In this session, yeah. So some barriers that we've heard back from families and just experienced in general, just availability, you know, with work schedules and how the family functions and them coming into the building, you know, that's one. Language barriers, you know, families who may not speak English and just not confident enough to come in and, you know, really trying to build our language capacity in all our schools. We do have some translation services that we utilize and apps that we utilize, but, you know, the need is so great, so just continuing to really focus on being thoughtful when we, during the hiring process, to really try to build that language capacity to a place that we can, you know, offer the support and that our families so desperately need. Cultural differences, that's obviously, you know, a barrier in just really educating our staff around what those are and really empowering them to open themselves up to supporting those differences, embracing them, and just really working together on that. Low-level literacy, so what we've noticed, sometimes when we send the letters home, we have families that can't read it even though it's in their home language. So really being thoughtful around that when we're communicating with families, you know, to not just send it out in written form, but really have that verbal communication so that we can ensure all families can access the information. Lack of understanding, I think, sometimes because a family may not, you know, be able to read the letter we're sending home, or, you know, just really making sure that we're asking questions to families to make sure that they've understood when we're having those conversations with them. I know for me, I'm fluent in Portuguese, but, you know, not Brazilian Portuguese, so I am very thoughtful when I speak with a Brazilian family to ask them to repeat that to me so I can make sure that what I'm trying to say is being understood. So this is just some examples of really training and building our staff to, you know, to have those conversations and being thoughtful about making sure that the understanding is happening. And then finally, COVID-19, I mean, I think that's the biggest one right now, right? Unfortunately, but shouldn't stop us from moving forward and building and, you know, being innovative in how we communicate and engage our families. Needs.
He came in the other way.
So I think we really sat with this, right? And what the needs are that would really impact our families the most. So what we really talked about was really having, you know, an identity, and I'll give an example, so we have a family that has three children, three different schools, and what we found was, we had so many people communicating with the family, it became overwhelming. So really...
Stop. Keep going.
So what we found was really just having like an identified person that was communicating with this family regularly, so it wasn't overwhelming. So really like taking the time to focus on that and really, you know, think of how this must feel for a family to have all these people calling them sometimes about the same thing, right? So we think that we really need to identify a person in each of our schools that becomes a family liaison type person, so that that'll be the go-to person at the school. We hope that this person would be bilingual or trilingual, and we would choose the language, the second language if possible, based on what was the highest need at that particular school. But that's a person would really be the one that would, you know, reach out to families, you know, on a daily basis, or, you know, if a family needs something, like we know that would be the target person. That person then would refer to whoever else in the school, you know, that would connect with the need that this particular family may have. I think just, you know, just being there at the curriculum nights and open houses to be able to translate, that's also so important. But I think that would be maybe our top need as far as really starting to do this work of getting this feedback, you know, from families and also what each particular school might need to improve upon their skill level. You know, obviously, we'd be overseen by district personnel, where we would have district-wide initiatives to really also streamline our processes so parent engagement activities looks the same throughout the whole district. We're all aligned with each other. I mean, it may be different variations of the same, but the core activity is the same, and that alignment really happens. So goals would be, you know, we're in the process of serving all our schools, to really look at what practices I use and how dedicated they have spent practice. So really looking at, you know, each activity, do they do it every time? Do they sometimes use it, you know, and just looking at, so that we can then build this alignment of, these are the, you know, maybe minimal standards or activities that every school must do, you know, on a minimal basis, and then building from that. Providing training to all our staff on best practice, that's so key and critical to this work. Identifying that core set of district-wide strategies that are practiced in all of our schools. Continue to offer the district-wide family workshops and building on those, and surveying our families on their needs, you know, maybe the goal for next year would be pre and post, so in the beginning of the year and then at the end of the year, so that we really see what our, measure what our growth is throughout the year. Okay, any questions?
I really appreciate that you really took us through all of the things that we've had on our agenda. And the reason I highlighted that piece of what is our shared mission is because if families are watching, I want families to hear that this is what people want, that a lot of times it can feel very much like an us versus them, and we don't ever want it to be that way. So that's why I wanted to stop and highlight the fact that that's what we were doing. So I wasn't trying to just interrupt you for the sake of interrupting, but I wanted to highlight what you said because it was really important. So that's why I did that. So I really appreciate that you heard through all of that. I'll let Mike always ask whatever questions.
Well, thank you very much for this, Cindy. It's really good, and I think I'm glad that the chairman had this meeting quickly because we really haven't met in a while, I guess, I don't think.
Well, I will say that this is a committee that was set up years ago.
Yeah.
Many, I think Dr. Goldstar was still on board. They met once, and then it has been dormant. This is an opportunity, as we said yesterday at one of our meetings, also, we're trying to put some systems in place where we get our committees on a cycle and really get input, you know, from the committee as well as that are, anything that we have to the committee. So it's important, like, I think it's important for us, parent engagement, we have to define what engagement really is, right? Because where we, our vision is to create this, we have systemic needs as well as individual specific needs at each school, because everybody does, as Cindy said, things differently. We have lots of good things happening in pockets. We have to make sure we systematize some of those things, build on them, and we also recognize that we have to create this district or these schools that we remove barriers that are keeping parents from coming to the school, create these inclusive, welcoming environments where a parent is not afraid to come into the school and to have their voice heard, right? Because that's what I feel, that's what engagement is all about, right? It's not really about just participating, it's really about being part of the process. So we need to put some good systems in place where we create in our schools and in our districts this relationship with our families so that our families feel like they are part of our process.
So superintendent, just by saying that, you said that there's pockets of success. Can you give me, just give us some examples of what those successes are as it pertains to this?
Well, I mean, I'll use an example of when we were, everybody says COVID, COVID, it was a huge barrier, that's true, but we have to look at, like, so a place like Tansy that had regular town meetings, virtual town meetings, but they had them in the evening to include their parents, to involve their parents, to keep them, you know, informed with everything that was going on. That's one example. Some, another school like Laterno, they have a yearly multicultural night where they have this huge celebration that there's dancing, there's food, there's opportunities for people to show their pride and their heritage. Those are just examples of some ways that we are celebrating our families. I went this summer to that, right before school started, to that, you know, the basketball tournament where we had, you know, the tournament there, we had cornhole tournament, we had a whole bunch of different community partners there. That was the best attended event that I've seen in a long time. That was during COVID, but it was, we have to be creative, it was outside, it was, and everybody was intentional about what they would put together and who the audience is. We have to create many more opportunities like that, where the more we build things, events, opportunities to bring our families in, the more our families will feel welcomed.
Yeah, no, I agree with that absolutely. I think too, it's not mentioned here, and maybe it's something, topic to bring, brought up somewhere else, but I think what plays into the parent engagement is the absenteeism rate. Once that's improved, I think that'll help out as well. And I guess my question would be that, what, as far as the language barrier, do we have enough folks that are speaking the language of the district, whether it's Spanish or...
No, we don't have enough.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not gonna, absolutely not.
We do not.
Absolutely not. We don't have enough.
I know we do have some, but not, we don't have enough.
We have some, but we don't have enough.
Right. Has that been an issue as far as hiring? Is it...
Well, I mean, I think that we always look for multilingual people as in our hiring processes, but you have to recruit people that are actually, I mean, it's deeper than that.
Yeah.
It's the language, knowing how to speak the language also. Our staff needs to reflect the students that we serve, et cetera, so that's, it's a huge piece in our hiring processes that we need to work through, but it's not an easy task, everybody. Our community has changed, we have to change with our community. So, yeah, I mean, we have a handful of principals who speak more than one language, a couple of them, I'm not even gonna say handful, a couple of them speak multiple languages, but not all of our, and we have teachers in every building, you might have a couple of teachers, but it's not as widespread. Even our community facilitators, we have made an effort to bring on Spanish-speaking, Portuguese-speaking, but we know that we need to go beyond that and make that more widespread.
Right.
So we have, we are working through that, but we don't have anywhere near what we need to, at the pace there, you know, you have all parents coming in to register their children.
Exactly.
Parents that are coming in from all different places. We need to have many people that speak multiple languages.
Yeah, and I think, you know...
Not necessarily.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would also add that just as it is in other positions in our district, the pay scale for this, for the community facilitator's position is very small, and so that also is part of the barrier in recruitment. That's what we should consider as well.
It's a deterrent, so it's a low-level paying position, as Dr. Taylor's saying, and, you know, it's not attractive enough to recruit people.
I think she's frozen.
And before we went to Ms. Taylor, the, I think, you know, there's gonna be, obviously there's gonna be a lot of needs that need to be prioritized.
Yep.
But I think the language, language is very high priority, just for me, and I'm sure for everybody else. But also too, as far as, Cynthia, you're in your office, do they have, do you guys have team meetings and how you're gonna go again, is there team meetings that you think that can, that help when you have those meetings, or do you have the meetings and do you mind maybe, if you don't have them, do you think that might help to maybe prioritize things like what we're looking at, what you mentioned here?
With engagement?
Yeah.
So my office is at the parent center, so, no, we don't bring in, and that's definitely one of our goals, to bring in, once we've identified that person at each school, to really have those focused meetings regularly so that this work is done collaboratively and it's streamlined throughout all of our schools and district-wide. So absolutely, that's a huge need.
And I would, so just one more thing.
No, 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 please.
And I would think too, I mean, that's very important, I agree with you, and getting the needs to prioritize for the language barrier, but also too, maybe even possibly, if you're not doing it already, more parents, maybe parents that are, parents that are involved with their children, maybe they can also help in the school with other parents.
Yeah.
Just a thought there.
Yeah.
Are you, thank you.
I...
Go ahead. I'm really bad at not interrupting because I get really excited, so I'm gonna try to keep myself in check for then.
Oh, no, I was just asking as far as like recruiting processes and stuff and like family and community liaisons, like how does that look as far, I know I'm a little late, I want to apologize for my attendance, I had a hard time, continuously having a hard time going through this, but I just wanted to kind of know how like that process goes. Is that like something, because me doing a lot of work in the community, a lot of the things that I see is there are a lot of people that are willing to actually volunteer, come up, show out, but it's also, one of the biggest things is people that they know, so, you know, some of the, and just for me personally, some of the things that I've tried to do is almost break things down into certain districts, if you would say, to kind of try to find parents or like family liaisons or community liaisons that you can work with that you can make those connections, you know, because I think for me, one of the easiest things has been reaching out to certain people in certain neighborhoods that... in certain neighborhoods that can actually draw these kids in or draw families in. Because there is a cultural, no matter how we put it, there's a cultural barrier, there's a language barrier. And, and the only way we're gonna be able to bring those walls down is to actually get people at the table that have the discussion. So that's just one of my, I, I'm a bit long-winded right now, but that's just one of my biggest questions. It's just like the recruiting process around like family liaisons and community liaisons.
Yeah, I mean, um, it, it's been a challenge. I know that we've reached out to different schools and colleges, um, as well. You know, and really looking at, you know, uh, putting it out there. We've done some, uh, job fairs. But yeah, we're struggling with, with just getting the applicants in. And then once we do, uh, for example, I've, I've had a position open for, for months. And I, I've offered the position four times to bilingual people who are able to, you know, who are very qualified to do the job, but once they find out the pay, they decline the position. So, um, but I'm so, we've been really dedicated to, I, I need to find a bilingual person. I can't just, you know, it's so, it's so key at the parent center with the level of, or the amount of families coming in that don't speak English. I, I, I really need to stick to that committed commitment. Um, so it's, it's been, it's been a challenge.
Now, is pay one of the biggest deterrents from the position, would you say?
Um, it's a pay deterrent.
Yeah, it's, 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 uh, it's, it's significant, so significant. I mean, four times that I've offered it. I, I'm embarrassed to say that, but it's, it's the reality. It's the truth of, you know, what's happened. So, yeah, it's definitely a significant barrier.
I do think that one of the ways that we, we have to, we have to be visible out in the community. And we have to plan these events and, and, and create opportunities to, to, that draw people in so that when you have people that come and then, then you get to meet parents or, or relatives or former students that say, oh, yeah, I wanna do that. And then you, that's how you recruit people, right? By building those relationships and saying, join us, join our team, come on over, we have something for you. I mean, you know, we, I think we need to do more of that so that we can, you know, draw people in. And, um, you know, uh, I, I do think that, um, one of the things that, like, an example, we have parent teacher conferences or, um, you know, parent night. Why can't we do some of that stuff in the community? Go to people instead of having them always come to us. And then you, you meet them halfway and then you take away that barrier.
I, um, when I was back on the school committee from the, from the land, a long ago, but, um, it was Meg Bay Brown was the superintendent. And, um, we were, we were toying with the idea, um, and this is just, you know, an idea. It didn't come to fruition, but I thought it might, might work for engagement with the, with the, uh, the community. Uh, to have maybe once every quarter, have yourself and maybe a couple of school committee members, uh, maybe one or two, go out to different schools and, uh, talk about, you know, what, um, what we're doing, uh, what we're doing. Is curriculum, any, any new programs coming up? Programs at the school, see how that program's going at the school, is that working out? And I thought it was a pretty good idea, um, but it just never happened. So I was like, maybe, you know, thinking, thinking if that's something that we could possibly consider.
Absolutely, absolutely. Doors are open.
Yeah.
So I think it's taking those ideas and just making them concrete, like how do we make those actionable? So I have a global questions, of course I do. What languages are we seeing the most of right now?
Spanish and Portuguese.
Okay.
Brazilian Portuguese.
Brazilian Portuguese specifically. How many staffs do we have, like at the parent center? How many folks do we have that can speak those languages?
So all of my staff except for two are bilingual. So we have Portuguese capacity, Spanish capacity, Camero.
I think that's my real question is, what language capacity do we have with an actual, real life person?
Yeah, so those are the three, um, beside English.
Are there other languages that you're seeing kind of slowly increase? Like I know in a neighboring district, they're actually seeing an influx of, um, families that speak Arabic. So I'm just, and it's just one of our neighboring towns. I'm just wondering, are you seeing some of that stuff too?
Um, so we, we get Arabic families coming in here and there, but it's not, it's not significant.
We're not.
No, and usually when they come in, uh, they've always, not usually, always. I haven't had in this, while I've been in this role, a family, an Arabic family that, because we do have staff that speak Arabic that I could call to, to help with the translation. Um, but they've always come in with an English speaking, um, child. So there's always either a child or a family member that, that has come in. But, um, I do, I do know that we have staff members that speak it and I would reach out to them to help us through the process. I have no problem with that. You know, if we had, you know, maybe this past summer, we had someone who spoke French. So I was able to just reach out to someone that I knew spoke French in another school who was able to help us, um, translate and get through the process. So where we, we, we've had to be resourceful with that and will not hesitate, um, you know, with any language that, you know, we might need.
I think the reality is we have to create a culture where bilingual folks, healthy bilingual folks want to come and work here.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we, we can't be, we can't be coy about it. Like, our city's been all over the news and not for great reasons in the last few years. So we've got to do something to kind of rectify some of that and make people not to come and work here in order for us to get even the applicants through the door. Because we're not gonna be able to if people are like, oh, I don't wanna go there. You know, I've lived here my whole life. I'm proud of this city. But not everybody that's been here, you know, has that same mentality. So we've gotta make this, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but we've gotta make this district somewhere that people want to come, settle in and stay here. Right? We've got somebody who's been here for thirty years. Right? But how many more of those do we have? I know we have some of those, right? We've got people that stay, but we have even more that, that leave.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we wanna create that culture.
Well, and I, and I think we need to be competitive too. Because I, I've had, you know, a bunch of my staff who've known others who, who are bilingual and encouraged them to apply because they do love working here. But then they're making more other places, you know? So it's really hard to, to, um, you know, get, and some of my staff have taken pay cuts to work here and they love it and they don't regret it, you know? And, and we're proud of that. It, it is an amazing place to work and, and we have such a, an amazing community that we service. So I think once they're here, they're happy. It's, it's really getting, you know, or being competitive. But, you know, it's hard to take a pay cut these days. And, you know, it's, it's the reality though, in many of these cases of, of people who have come in and were really excited to, to join our team, but then couldn't afford the pay cut.
I just have two other questions. What is our engagement with our special education and our M L L, M L L students right now? Are we seeing kind of that same engagement? Are we seeing some strong engagement from those specific populations? Or are we seeing, what are we seeing?
I think, you know, we've remained consistent with our special ed engagement primarily due to the models we put out last year. And we were in a few districts who for our substantial, substantial separate classrooms stayed open for them the entire year, which I think is something we should all be very proud of. And then for our inclusion students, also providing a hybrid model for them and high quality instruction remotely. So, you know, I think we kept good connections with them. I think we've seen consistent members and attendance in a lot of our sub separate classrooms. Just because, you know, there wasn't that significant break in the action. Along with the fact we've also provided consistent in-person summer services, or at least made that offer to families to have those present as well. In terms of, uh, engaging our families and other pieces, we've kept our CPAC meetings online, uh, which we've actually seen higher attendance, being, having them be virtual. As opposed to previously, we had them in person. We've been averaging anywhere from about thirty to, I think we've been at as high as like seventy-five participants in past, past meetings, past like year and a half, which is great. We're about to start to go on board with, uh, our partners of, uh, SMEC as well as, uh, Rochester Regional in their Community Talk Series, which is basically just, uh, to bring resources out to parents and be able to learn about certain different areas of disability or community resources. So we're about to jump on board with them. So another big, uh, option to offer out to our families. Other piece, um, in terms of like meeting engagement for parents, we've, what we've seen is we've seen a great uptick in participation since we've provided remote. It's made it a lot easier for parents to attend and engage and be a part of their kid's education, which is one of the primary things we need to make sure we're doing as a district. We've seen a good, better response rate, like we said, attendance rate. You know, this year with less restrictions, we have offered a lot of our parents the option. If they want to have an in-person meeting, they can. But we've seen a lot of them really stay remote, uh, just because it's much more flexible for, for their means. You know, we're taking barriers out of the way in this place and that they don't have to take off work. They don't have to have transportation. So it's a much more manageable situation. For a lot of our families, I think that's what we've seen, you know, just a much higher level, uh, of engagement over the past two years.
As for our M L L department, they do have an LPAC, which is a parent advisory council also. It's a formalized process. They have officers that are elected annually. It was formed in, in January twenty twenty. Actually went with the president, the incoming president that was for this year. They have pretty good attendance, um, uh, at each meeting between thirty to, to forty-five families. Usually it's virtual, um, uh, the meetings. And usually there, there's an agenda where they discuss current issue, like we have access testing that, you know, there's children who are participating in. We had tests and stay just to explain, uh, those things. But, and obviously there's, um, different, people speak different languages. So there are, those meetings are always, um, attended and well-attended and, and people are there to do translations, et cetera. So, um, uh, Fernando Vera Cruz, our M L L director, has, uh, spearheaded that piece. That's grown, um, in the last two years and our expectations that it's gonna continue to grow, just like the CPAC, that, um, uh, Michael and his people, um, have, uh, started and worked through. And, um, that's just yet another way parents can, uh, lend their voice, um, in regards to their students and, and their needs.
So when I think about that, I'm thinking that the CPAC and the LPAC probably have some of those practices already in place that we could then use to reach out to the greater people in the community, right? So if we can bring some of those, if I can make that suggestion. We have a ton of stuff that we're doing. There's no shortage of attempts to engage families. But I think what you were saying, Cynthia, is like, if, if we can, if we can make those systems more concrete and have them be across the board, then we're gonna be in better shape. So when we think about next steps, if I can make a suggestion, that would formalize those next, those systems. Right? If you're saying that Tansy did town halls and those were really successful, is that something that can be rectified? But I think right here in your presentation, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think you have a great plan to, to create these systems, like let's survey our schools, let's survey our families. Great, we do a concrete needs assessment. And then you, you hit on these next key steps. And I think if we formalize that process and bring these supports, bring these pieces of need to families versus having them come in all the time, I think we're gonna be in really good shape.
Opportunity, about opening up that door.
But we're only gonna be as good as the systems that we have. So if we can create really good systems by doing these pieces, and I'm sure everybody at this people is, is willing to help try to make these, you know, actionable steps that we can take, then I think we're gonna be in really good shape. Because you're doing so much to engage families. It's not for lack of trying. I think we just need to formalize all of that so that we have one system across the board.
And just one other thing, Cynthia, do you think you have enough people in your office right now?
Uh, well, I mean.
I know you could use more, but seriously, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think.
Because it's a daunting task, I mean, to.
Honestly, it's in, yes, and we have meeting at the schools.
And I said, we have ten thousand kids across the district and, you know, the P Center doesn't have ten thousand, you know, folks to reach out to every family. We could always use more, right? Sorry, I, we totally took over sort of that.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we could envision, you know, you know, Pollyanna, right? Just, it, it would be those people, um, you know, maybe one other person at the P that will help with, um, you know, really bringing the people that are at the schools. Because we really need them at the schools in the middle of, you know, um, the, the school, each school community and really working firsthand with our families so that those one-to-one connections are happening. Because that's really key in all this. We're not, we can't just engage with, um, you know, community events and, and, you know.
Right.
Events, right? Or, or, uh, you know, these nights. It's, those one-to-one communications really need to happen on a daily basis. So I think that those are the greatest needs, having the personnel to do that. That has the, you know, the ability to, uh, communicate one-on-one with families. Supporting teachers so that teachers can also have that one-to-one communication because that's really, uh, essential.
We have some community facilitators. Last year we added some to the budget. Our goal would be to have a community facilitator at each school, um, for next year to add the, the remaining ones to the budget so that they can, every school can have that person that is the link between home and school and does some of that work with the school staff as well as with families, creates those workshops, works together with other community facilitators to create opportunities to engage parents, et cetera. So that's a priority that we need to, um, invest in.
Yeah, I think so. Do you think too, superintendent, that, um, given the size of some of the schools, one is enough or?
Well, I, I mean, I'd like to think that we're gonna start with one and, and go from there. First, I, I would like to see if we can build that foundation, go from there and then, um, build as needed. But, um, we need at minimum to have one in every school.
Mr. Hart's going big or?
Yep.
A bunch of them. The community facilitator position is the same position that you're talking about here about a family liaison, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm just asking that question like out of ignorance. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, no, I just didn't wanna name it. I wanted to sort of really, uh, identify what, what they were doing at the core, right?
And you answered my next question was, you know, how do we make that happen? Which you already said that that's the plan moving forward to make sure that one happens, that we have at least one in each school. But now the question is, how do we make that a more enticing position for folks?
I think we would have to bring that position, if we want to change the scale, we would have to bring that position with, uh, proposed scale to the school committee, with the rationale of why it's important first to, um, pay them more equitable salary, to be more competitive with our neighboring communities and recognizing just the importance of that role. So I think that's something that we need to, to, to look at and to, um, to bring forth.
So can I make one more suggestion about that? So U Bedford has a similar model. They don't have one person each, each school, but they do have one person in certain identified schools. Can we look at, like comparable, what is it that they're paying their folks? Because they're not having a hard time filling those positions. That would be my only other suggestion. That's to be operationalize the rules and then we see what the other districts are doing and we bring those here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Just real quick, I was just gonna also say, if you're looking at our dad building a model, just kind of like collaborating with community partners and almost like a crossover role. That's, no, that's one of the biggest things is just, um, you know, making sure that, um, you know, we're, obviously it's not our job to completely serve the community. But when you're looking at some of these roles, um, you know, it kind of has to be a crossover when you're, when you're doing a lot of these things. And obviously, yeah, I'm part of the committee, but I'll, you know, I'll be around helping with a lot of this stuff to make sure, um, that it, that it takes also.
And it's gotta be people that are, um, And it's gotta be people that are, um, in, in entrenched in the community, because if you're going to, um, uh, hook families up with services within the community, you need to know what's out there, you need to be able to, um, uh, be that go-between and, and really, you know, it's almost like a care coordination type of thing, right?
Speak in my language.
Speaking in language.
And, and just another thing too, I know I mentioned like reaching out and engaging the, uh, community and then teachers at the schools, maybe once a quarter, but also too, I forgot to mention neighborhood groups throughout the state too.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that's something we should.
I remember when I first came on board, when I became the principal at Durfee, that's one of the things, I traveled to all the neighborhood groups
Absolutely.
just to introduce myself, I mean, it's a good opportunity for us to do that.
So, let's go on a road trip.
Yeah.
Bring it on the road.
Let's go, because we're not.
Yeah, we should do it at different Dunkin' Donuts all throughout the city.
Yeah.
We, I, I think at last count, we had something like twenty-eight of them, so, you know, why not? We'll hit most families by hitting all of those, right? Although we could stay local and do a little like pink green or something like that. Do we have any other questions or anything else that we wanna talk about?
I think Dr. Taylor has a virtual handout.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see from here. Bring, bring your closer. I'm kidding, you don't have to, Tab, I'm kidding.
No, it's quite all right, um, downside of technology, um, Cindy and Superintendent Potts have clear, you know, they've been clear in their summation. That family liaison, community facilitator position is the linchpin to make any family engagement initiative successful. So if we got nothing else, that is critical. Uh, and I would also argue that we need, that's sixteen new values potentially. We would also, Cindy would also need support in supervising those positions and thinking through greater district-wide, ten thousand students that we have to start, it's a large number. Um, as one person to supervise sixteen on top of the ten that you already have, uh, we should really think about capacity and not burning ground.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that for you.
That was sweet.
Do we have anything else?
Can I just do a adjourn?
In a second. Then we are adjourned? Oh, sorry.
Mr. Bailey?
Oh.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Sorry, yes.